A little after seven, we're going to open the... this part of our meeting is a public hearing only. The questions and comments are only for the change in zoning to rezone the property on Fargo Road to a putt, which is a planned unit development. No other conversations will be had. We're not going to vote on it tonight. We are here only to hear your comments. And at that time, after that's done, we will close the public hearing and then proceed on with the rest of our... with our meeting. We'll also do part two and part three of the short environmental assessment form. So we'll start out, I'll read the proposed local law of 2018. Whereas the town board of the town of Stafford, New York desires to consider adopting legislation to amend its zoning law to rezone for parcel located near the corner of New York State Route 5 and Fargo Road. They have the tax back numbers here from agricultural residential to planned unit development, also known as Town of Stafford Local Law Number Two of 2017. Now therefore be it resolved by the town board of the town of Stafford, New York that proposed local law number three of 2018 entitled Town of Stafford Zoning Amendment of 2018, which proposed local law is now in its final form and appears by a copy there out here to attach be and the same is introduced for adoption. And be it further resolved that said proposed local law be laid upon the desk of the members of the town board on this date and remain there and a copy thereof be kept on file in the office of town clerk till April 9th, 2018. And there's a public hearing to be held before this town board on the ninth day of April 2018 at 7:00 PM at the Stafford Town Hall, 8903 Route 237, on the advisability of enacting said proposed local law. And be it further resolved that a copy of said proposed local law be mailed to each member of the town board, not in attendance at this meeting, and opposed paid properly addressed and securely closed on mail in a postbox within the town of Stafford, New York, not less than ten calendar days exclusive of Sunday prior to the date of said public hearing. And be it further resolved that the town clerk shall cause notice of said public hearing to be published once in the Daily News, no more than ten, but at least five days prior to the date of said public hearing, which notice shall contain the time and place of said hearing. The title and purpose thereof, as well as a statement that a copy of said proposed local law is on file in the town clerk's office dated March 12th to the 18th. So the conversation tonight will be on the advisability of changing the law. There are other things that need to be done, that Mr. Cole needs to do after this. But your comments be restricted to changing of the law.
Hi myself, I'm Robert Marsil. I live here on Fargo Road. I could see no sense in changing the law. What was the purpose of changing it?
Well, it has to be changed in order for him to proceed with his project.
Well, why is that even considered? I mean, where do people live on the road? We're just finding out about all this stuff. And you guys been talking about it since August. I mean, you put a little script in the Daily News. There's two people on our road to get the Daily News. Nobody else does. I thought you were going to send out mailers to the neighborhood. And now all of a sudden you want to change? I don't understand why. I don't understand why he had to write to tear down trees that don't even belong to him? That's all county property? Where'd he get that? I don't understand any of this.
And the mess is left there.
Starts stuff, he leaves it? We got to look at it. I just don't understand why it's got to be changed.
Well, that's what this public hearing is about.
If I give any reasons why you want to change it, other than the housing project?
Well, in order for him to proceed with his project, the zoning has to be changed. Now, are we going to change it? Well, maybe, maybe not. But that's not going to happen tonight.
Right. Have you considered all the traffic and everything on the road and all that stuff?
This is all part of what will have to be done before we can make... we can change the law. There's some things that he has to do yet.
So you'll do a traffic study, you're saying?
I don't know that a traffic study is necessary.
I think there are other places, other... We've lost too much agriculture land to housing and other things. And you never get it back. And we need agriculture. It's what feeds this country.
We're talking about seven acre parcel that I cannot get anybody to fire for free. I've tried to offer it to many people for free to come and cut the hay. They won't even come and do it because it's too small.
Might be for some, but it might not be for others.
I'm telling you, I've offered it to several people in the past.
Yeah, I've heard you.
So it does nothing but grow weeds, which I have to take care of.
Doesn't have to be.
Well, I have to do something with them there. Become a firehead.
I own the three acres on the corner. I'm adjacent to him. I've known him for 10 years. I've worked with him. He's worked for me. He's a man of his word. If he says he's going to do something, he does it. I've had no problems with him as a neighbor. And it's going on... Kind of Brian Wormley. I own the three and a half acres on the corner. Fast and all in the dance, do you? So I'm just saying that I'm not against it by any means. And if he says he's going to do something, he does what he says. So if you put limits and you tell him what has to be done, he will do it because that's the kind of guy he is. So if you set parameters and provisions and this has to be done, I know from my relationship with him that he's going to do what you guys tell him to do. So he's not a guy that, you know, doesn't follow directions. And he wants to make the place nicer. He wants to take out the old trailers. He wants to, you know, make it nicer than it is.
We all have dreams.
Well, I'm just telling you my point of view. And I'm his neighbor too, so.
And we have to live next to it and bang it to...
Do you have to look at stuff half-built?
I don't see anything half-built over there.
Look at the mess he just made.
I cleared the trees down so I could take the hill down for better vision and better maintenance.
And you got permission to do that from the county?
That's his property.
That's my property. They have it right away.
Is your property from the pole of the road is not your property?
Okay. I'm not going to go there.
Okay, I ain't arguing there.
Okay, nope.
It's just a bad place to put a...
Actually, the county and the town with their comprehensive plans have designated Fargo Road and Route 5 the best places to grow the residential area in Stafford.
There's nothing there.
No shoulders on the road?
There's nothing there.
That's exactly... I mean, what... why would you need shoulders?
How can people drive around people pulling into your place? You're talking 32 to 64 cars coming in and out of there.
I'm talking two people per side. So that's four people in a building. Most people, when they get to be 55 and older, majority of them have one car. Some may have two, but chances are...
They both got to work.
All right, this is a conversation...
That's a conversation for another...
Later. We're talking about changing the law.
I don't think it should be changed. I just have one question. If he wants to build these things, why do you have nine acres for sale?
At $50,000 a pop?
I put the land up for sale because of the fact that I offered it up to the neighborhood. If you want to have the project, if you want to own the property next to your home, I've offered it up for sale.
No, you didn't.
I've got a for sale sign up there.
We offered to buy the back, from back of our house to the hedge row.
At that time, at that time, I did not want to sell that.
I'm not going to pay $50,000.
Now I've decided to offer you up the property.
I'd pay $5,000. I'm not going to pay $50,000 for that little parcel of land. That's ridiculous. I'd buy it.
People's value on everything is different, ma'am. Your value on it is what your value is, my value.
$50,000, you're assessed for... you bought it for 16 and...
Okay, what you bought it, what...
It doesn't matter.
That's not part of the... that's not part of the discussion here. That's not part of it.
So I take it you don't want to sell it? I'm confused.
I said it's for sale and I will entertain any offers.
Okay, it's for sale. So if you sell it, then you're not putting up the...
No, I want to go forward with my proposed project.
Oh, okay.
But I've offered it up for sale in the last three weeks.
Okay.
So if the neighbors do have an opportunity to purchase it, if they would like to purchase some or all, I'll sell the whole nine acres. If somebody wants to purchase the whole thing or parts of it, I'll entertain any offers.
Okay.
But I would love to go through with my project.
Okay.
As proposed.
If he doesn't know what he wants to do with it, selling or building putt or hitting the putt, how do you guys still have a vote for it?
No, I do know what I want to do with it, Kurt. I just explained to you that I want to...
I'm asking him, I'm addressing him.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
I don't know how you guys can make that kind of decision. According to your manual, page 34, when you read that, when the person applies for a putt, he's supposed to... Yeah, I was just saying that according to their old manual, page 34, 35, when you read it, he's applying for a putt. He's supposed to give you an explanation of what he wants to do, which I understand the last seven months, he's changed seven months in a row. So if he's changed it that many times on the way through the process, now puts it up for sale, how can you gentlemen make a decision when you're really not sure and he's not sure what he really wants to do? I'm confused there because according to those pages when you're reading, he was supposed to have things in writing about the adjacent properties, their values, and everything else that he was going to do. I mean, you guys can read them. You got them right there in the books, page 3 to 4 explains the process. I haven't seen anything in writing, a process for you gentlemen to make for the decision. So how are you going to do that? Well, these talk, and I wouldn't mind being there.
Like I say, it's not going to happen tonight.
Right, I understand.
Anyone else have any comments?
Why is this put in the paper that you voted on? You didn't see any of this stuff? The town has voted five to zero in favor of it? Town board, right there.
Yes, it's there, writing.
This is the way the process works. It starts with the planning board. It goes to the town board.
It said it was approved by the town board.
It goes to the county planning board.
Tony, you're not on the board here. Please let the board choose.
Okay.
I don't know what this is here.
It was on... I pulled it off the internet. It's from Stafford. I don't know who put that in there. And along with it's a done deal, that certainly doesn't work very good.
It isn't a done deal. I don't know what this is all about at all.
Well, we're not on the board. We're residents.
Okay, did you read this in the Daily News?
No.
Okay, that's our legal publication. You didn't read it there, it didn't happen.
Who's putting quotes as to what Tony says and what Mr. Mullins said? It's all in there. Did somebody just dream that up?
I have no idea. All of this stuff here is not relevant to tonight's meeting. Yes?
The only way that you communicate this is through the Daily News?
That's our legal publication.
I haven't got the Daily News for a year.
Well, we have to designate a legal publication to publish legal notices, if you understand. And the Daily News is it.
That sounds kind of shallow as to... None of us have heard it. Other people brought up about the Daily News too, so it needs to be revisited.
Where do you get your information from? Why do you...
I look at stuff online and... The Daily News is a lot of nonsense.
The Daily News is online?
Yes. If you search, it includes it for you.
Okay, just quick on that one. The motion was to have the public hearing, not to approve the project. So whoever wrote that...
Daily News online.
Who's wrong?
It was on the computer. All the quotes from what people said here, that's not true?
We didn't vote for the project. We voted for the public hearing.
We don't know that.
We don't write that.
We have your assessors saying it's a done deal and then this comes out in paper. What do you want us to think? I had to go down the road and stick that notice in everybody's mailbox. Because nobody knew about this project. We didn't know nothing about it till Tony was tearing down the trees.
Doesn't say where it's from, but again, the vote was to have a public hearing. And we're not going to deny somebody a public hearing.
Well, if you've got to excuse us because we're not on your board, we don't know. We're here trying to protect our property and our country road and our way of living, which is going to be a mess. I'm sorry.
From day one till the end.
There's been buckets there for two and a half years, sitting there for...
What does this have to do with the meaning here?
It's character.
That's defamation of character, actually.
It is not.
It is.
It's a fact.
You're bringing up things, for the record, you're bringing up things that have nothing to do with this meeting and what's on the docket for this meeting.
Well, we got a right to talk to you.
Okay, enough said.
Okay.
Anyone else have any comment? We'll close the meeting at 7:19. I'm going to... we'll do this part in here. I'll read the Tennessee County Planning Board referral notice of final action. Description zoning map to rezone 8.6 acres from agricultural residential district to planned unit development district to construct a 32-unit, 16-duplex building, senior townhouse development. Location Fargo Road, Stafford, zoning district AR, agricultural residential. Approval, this is approval of the county planning board. The proposed rezone to planned unit development for a senior townhouse development is consistent with the town comprehensive plans, future land use map, which calls for the Fargo Road Route 5 area to be residential and commercial and thus should pose no significant countywide or intercommunity impact. Townhouses are identified as a housing type that is in demand by the recently completed Tennessee County Housing Needs and Market Analysis and believe he ultimately signed it. If the town board decides to proceed, this is from our chairman of the Stafford Planning Board. If the town board decides to proceed with the zoning and with a rezone and approves it, the developer will then need to return to the planning board with more detailed engineering plans for the site plan approval prior to proceeding with the construction. Mr. Cole has indicated the development would be built in phases as shown on the attached concept plan. The project will be required to comply with all New York State Building and Fire Codes as well as meet Tennessee County Highway Department requirements for the entrance off Fargo Road and of the Tennessee County Health Department, Tennessee County Water Authority for wastewater disposal and water supply. Based on our meetings and discussions with the developer and in consideration that residents of the town of Stafford have previously indicated that senior housing of a similar type is needed within the town, it is the planning board's recommendation that the town board consider rezoning the properties owned by Mr. Cole to a putt as portrayed on attached concept putt plan. Should the town agree to move ahead, the procedure outlined in section 182-24, paragraphs A and B would need to be followed, including holding a public hearing and filing of a local law for the rezone. Please feel free to contact me should you have any questions or needs, any additional input as to how we formulated our recommendation. This is William R. Van Alst, chairman of the Stafford Planning Board. Page one of the short environmental assessment form has been done by Mr. Cole. We'll proceed now with part two. All right, any... Then by... we're shuffling back and forth between the conference room and this... Excuse me. Part of the short environmental assessment form is an impact assessment. Part two is to be completed by the lead agency, which is the town board. Answers all of the following questions in part two using the information contained in part one and other materials submitted by the project sponsor or otherwise available to the reviewer. When answering the questions, a reviewer should be guided by the concept. Have any responses been reasonably considered, considering the scale and context of the proposed action? Question number one. Will a proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? This is where we need your feedback on. So far, we've really only heard that you don't really like the change, that ag land shouldn't be consumed, and that it's been offered up for sale. So maybe the correct answer there, moderate to large impact may occur. Would you agree with that?
Isn't that a planned area? Do we have that area as a planned area?
No, but that doesn't matter. This has to do with changing the law.
Yeah, but it says... We'll have to change in that area. It will, it will change.
Would you read it again, please?
Will a proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? I guess my opinion would be moderate to large impact may occur.
It will take a land of busy land.
All right, we agree on the first one? Yeah. Will a proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? As a little...
Sure.
Okay. Will a proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
Yes.
Will a proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area, CEA? Well, there's something in there and we're not sure exactly what it is.
According to part one, there is no critical environmental area.
No?
Yeah, a little bit, I think it's the last sheet of part one. Do you have the last sheet? There's a little map up there on top and then there's responses to several questions.
Yeah.
And under question seven, critical environmental area, it says no.
National Register of Historic Places, no. Archaeological sites, yes. Wetlands or other regulated water bodies, no. Question threatened or endangered animal, no. Question 16, 100-year flood plan, digital mapping are not available or incomplete. Refer to EAF work. Mediation site, no. So that question would be small or no impact. Will a proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway?
Well, it will increase the traffic.
You can't even walk down the street now as it is.
Yeah, Fargo Road is extremely busy and there's been close calls on the curve.
However, will the proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure on mass transit, biking, or walkway? Probably not.
For the most part, these people are coming out and going toward Batavia, so they'll only be impacting 500 feet of the highway.
You can't say that. You don't know the full one.
Tracker trailers go down there all the time using the...
Summertime?
I know, but there're not going to be any tracker trailers coming out of those.
I think what all of these, what you have to do is you have to gauge the opinion because right now that's all you can give is opinion. I can't give you a definitive traffic study. And then you have to... Then you have to prove out what it is. Well, then you have to be moderate to large impact may or...
It may.
May. Didn't say it will or didn't say it may or... No?
I don't agree. You guys can agree, I don't agree.
You guys can agree, I don't agree with that, so.
That's the only way they're going to go out, this time Fargo, it's the only exit?
That's it. And it definitely increases traffic.
Yeah, we, we don't know this much, but it may improve.
If, if nothing changes, it definitely doesn't change anything, this may affect it.
Will a proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy as it fails to incorporate reasonable, reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. No. Agreed? Will a proposed action impact, impact existing, A, public slash pub, private water supplies? Public slash private wastewater treatment utilities? And be a no on both of those because we don't have wastewater, well, private, no. Agreed?
Agreed.
Everybody's on public water there, we don't have to worry about the distance.
Right.
Distance from Leach Field? Now, that's, that's up to the.
That's up to the D.C., because I already talked to them, they have different standards for that type of system we listed.
Will a proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? I, I see no.
Based on, based on the part one response, there is potential for archaeological site. I think we, we had talked about that and Mr. Paul was supposed to contact me and say to start preservation office.
Which I'm in the process of doing, that takes a little time.
Well, we don't know.
Say yes. I don't see where it says yes.
Small.
No, it says small impact maker or minor or large impact maker. So you're saying it's sort of a large.
We don't know what it is because he hasn't contacted, we didn't even know he was there five minutes ago.
So, why would it be small?
Again, by the way.
Well, we don't know.
I don't know.
It doesn't really, it doesn't really matter.
But I'm saying, you can't answer.
At this point in time, you can't answer.
No, you can't.
Let's say we, small? We are.
It's too bad they don't have a medium.
Yeah, exactly. Will a proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? For instance, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna. Small impact?
Could be small. We don't know the effect yet in groundwater or runoff.
There won't be any runoff, he's sitting on a gravel pile down there. Will a proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? Okay. Small impact. Will a proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Small, no or small. Part three, determination of significance. For every question in part two that was answered, moderate to large impact may occur. Or if there is a need to explain why a particular element of the proposed action may or will not result in a significant adverse environmental impact. Please complete part three. Part three should be in sufficient detail, identify the impact, including any measures or design elements that have been included by the project sponsor to avoid or reduce impacts. Part three should also explain how the lead agency determined that the impact may or will not be significant. Each potential impact should be assessed, consider its setting, probability of occurring, duration, irreversibility, geographic scope and magnitude. Also consider the potential for short term, long term cumulative impacts. Comments from the board? Well, what we would need to do with each of these is just like they say, we have to lay out, uh, uh, need to explain why a particular element of proposed action will or, will not result in significant and adverse environmental impact. So if you look at the first one that we had, a moderate to large impact, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? So adopted land use plan, would there, do we have any type of, uh, uh, other purpose that we proposed in the comprehensive plan for that area that would conflict with this? Well, I'd say no. Will a proposed action result in a change or use or intensity of use of land? Well, obviously, yes, it is. Will a proposed action impair the character or quality of existing community? Well, the existing community is entire town staff. The short community is people who live on the Fargo Road. Somebody that lives over on the Buckley Road might, might care less, but somebody that lives on the Fargo Road wouldn't care about you, so. Depends on where you live. All of these comments that were saying, should be, you, you, you recording this? Okay.
Bob, I fell down off of the planning board. Just a reminder, this is, the secret that we're doing is just for the result.
Right.
So we're changing it from basically what's allowed to be residential or agricultural property to a proposed pod that is proposed to be all residential. So the change in the character of, of the site really is none because it's already zoned right now for residential. And the pod is, the pod proposal is only for residential development. So from that point of view, there's really no change in the, in the character of the land from what it currently is.
It does change the density though. By having a planned unit development, you no longer are following all of our zoning rules for density. So that, and, and that is what we're really looking at, is a density question. Will a proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? We have really no knowledge of that.
No, not according to the, according to part one, there is no critical environmental area there. That's really kind of a point.
Difficult sometimes to have an answer to all of them. Will a proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? Well, the last three, it has no effect on it. Will it have an adverse check on level of traffic? Local traffic, probably yes, according to the neighborhood, but the, the other three, no. All of these comments are being recorded, we're not prepared to record everything tonight. We'll put this all in writing after, before we have a vote. Will a proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? Well, we, we said no, small, small impact and it would be small. Taking into the, the, the larger picture. Will a proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? Absolutely not, there's water there, public water. Public, private wastewater treatment, treatment utilities? We have no public wastewater treatment. There's nothing there to affect. Will a proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, aesthetic resources? We were, the, the board was kind of divided on that, between no or small or moderate to large. Historic, archaeological, architectural, aesthetic resources? I can't see where it would. Will a proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna? We said small or no impact. Will a proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will a proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. We only had, out of eleven questions, there were only four that definitely said there would be moderate to impact, moderate to large impact. The rest would be small. Yes.
There's water on the property, but there's no where for the wastewater to go?
This will be private, individual subject systems.
So that's something to do with the ecology of the whole system, that's wastewater's, you know, gotta be accounted for too, right?
Yeah, and it will be, we don't have that information.
I understand that's something that you decided to do.
Yep, what will be. Any other comments? Bill, did we miss anything?
No, I don't think so.
You're going to be part of this down the road still. Alright, we have basically four of them that we said could be a moderate to large impact. So the first one, does it conflict, conflict with an adopted land use? Well, there's no evidence that it conflicts with the comprehensive plan and the feedback from the county endorses that. And it doesn't really change anything about our zoning laws. It's AR now, it goes to planned unit development and planned unit development is something that exists within our zoning laws. So I would have to say that although at first blush, it looks like a moderate to large impact, I don't see how either of those, uh, is an impact on this. When you go down to the next question, will the proposed action result in the change of use or intensity of the use of the land? Well, that is the big one because the planned unit development is different than residential. But you also have a trailer park right there, which is a high intensity use of the land, just like a planned unit development. So now, is this going to change the character beyond what's already there with the intensive use of the land with the trailer park that already exists? And I think that's still an open question. The third one, the pros, uh, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing commed, community? Uh, there's an open ended one.
It's next to the trailer park.
Yep. But again, it's, there, there's at least something to that. But again, so far, I haven't heard anything that we don't already know about this project that would. I mean, that's the kind of what we're looking for.
What about the value of our homes falling down?
I'm glad you brought that up, Bob.
Okay, this is a kind of.
Okay. We don't know one way or the other, whether it is or not, so. Let's stick, stick to this. If he has a short answer, it's on that. Well, okay, alright, you got a short answer?
I spoke with the assessor for the town of Potavia and she did a six hundred foot bumper zone, buffer zone radius around Clinton crossings from two thousand eight, when that was being built till now. And I have all the comparisons here, if people want to look at them, find to, they've all gone up in value. Every property within the six hundred foot radius.
Clinton crossings is not near residential area. There's a daycare center next door and there's nothing on the other side. It's not, there's no residential area. It's not on top of my house or anybody's house.
Excuse me, ma'am, you have Springham Drive behind there?
That's quite a ways away.
That's quite a ways away and they.
I just told you, this is all within a six hundred foot radius of Clinton Crossing. I have an aerial view of it and it takes in every property within six hundred feet.
That's not twenty feet.
Excuse me, I said, I have a proper, I have a thing there that takes in a six hundred foot radius, so it has some commercial, some residential. And you can view the properties there, they're all written on that second page, what the values were in two thousand eight and what the values are presently in two thousand eighteen. They've all gone up anywhere from. Well, it's right there in black and white.
It's gonna be sixty feet from our house.
Sixty, twenty.
Twenty feet from our house on both sides, what do you think we're gonna do?
No, we're not gonna be that close.
You know what?
Jackie, I don't think you, I'm not sure if you know the, the whole scope of the project or not. You're actually probably closer to Kirk than you're gonna be to these homes.
Oh, no.
No, huh, are you kidding?
Your leash line is almost on top of ours.
Pardon me?
The leash line you're putting behind you is almost on top of mine.
The leash lines are going on the opposite side of the property.
Right, right next to my property.
No.
You're gonna put them right behind my house. You look at your plans.
Okay, this is not, this, you're right, this is not the place.
Right.
I'm not supposed to even be talking.
So, so I was just saying, there is, there is a question on this, but that's, that's for another time. Are there any more comments? If not, it's seven fifty.
Well, just, I'm just hearing, you know, I have talked to Tim Heinz with County Howie Department. Yeah, and Tim Heinz, County Howie Department, issues the permits for driveway. And here in phone, you know, issue a driveway permit without going to the traffic and safety control board and they will do an evaluation thing. Just so you know, that's.
Okay, that's.
Well, it's county impacts is the driveway handle, that's why I guess we're gonna issue those of that.
Seven fifty.
Well, yeah.
It's comparable. With this part of the meeting. We're gonna go in, I don't know how many of you are gonna wanna be at the rest of the meeting. If you are, if, if you're all gonna stay, we'll bring our paperwork in here and we can finish the meeting in here.
Oh, yeah, we'll stay.
Okay, again, I would be looking for specific feedback on, will the proposed action result in a change in use or intensity of the use of land? And would proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
So both those are yes answers.
That's, again.
If you put more people on the property, it increases the amount of activity on that process. Hundred percent, nobody can argue that. You add more people, it adds more things to that.
Yes, and a planned unit development is.
So that first answer is a definite yes. It adds, it adds everything that you just talked about.
But. Again, planned unit development is within the scope of the lawful use.
But you asked if it was gonna increase the amount of use on the land and it is, it's gonna increase it by a lot. Every person that ends up being in that apartment building goes up. Their families that come and visit, it goes up. During the holidays, it goes up, everything, all of it.
You already have a trailer park there.
I'm aware of that, but you're adding. I'm aware of that, but you're adding to the trailer park, so more people are going to be on the property, so the, the amount of made use goes up.
Trailer park.
Trailer park is going to have on Fargo Road.
Yeah, they.
There's always access to the trailer park on Fargo Road. It's a Route 5 property, not Fargo Road.
Again, it's.
Well, you keep bringing it up, no.
No, I'm, 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 I'm looking for something that means something.
Add more people.
Geez, really?
Wow. You know, you're going to have more people. People have guests, grandchildren come over, sisters, brothers, whatever. You're going to have more traffic on Fargo Road because nobody can say at this point whether they're all going to turn and go to Route 5. Fargo Road is already extremely busy with traffic, mainly semis.
And you're going to park driveway right on.
We've got that curve and it's a blind curve. I have seen several almost accidents. So it will impact Fargo Road, the traffic will impact the residents, especially in that area. I mean, it will.
By?
By the more traffic. People coming out at the Fargo Road.
Spiegelman's 50 on that way, nobody goes 50 on that road.
Oh, God, nobody.
Oh, it would be nice if they.
I know, but that's my point, they say the Spiegelman's 50, but nobody listens to that. You get the Jake Craig sound at our house and we're a quarter mile up the street and we ask.
Anita, don't you have one in her house?
Yes.
I have a Bemersy place at my house.
Yeah.
In my driveway.
Had it happen for that pole.
You got one more question?
That was bad.
I don't, I don't live on that corner, I'm not around that corner, but I also got to thinking after hearing that everybody here. You often have to, also have to consider how are the lights in that apartment building going to shine on other people's property? That's known as light pollution. I mean, you've got to compensate for that too. And then the noise.
That's been addressed.
It has been addressed.
Yes.
How and well.
How and what, that's the challenge.
Yeah, I was going to say.
You put an outside light on a building, look at the, look at the outside light. This is a new light on the outside of this addition. It doesn't shine on anybody's property. It lights the area underneath it.
But this isn't in his backyard either.
This would be a planning board issue. The lighting would be a planning board issue.